This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the August 17th, 2022 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We do have all commissioners present this evening. If you would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the website for public access. At this time, I'd like to ask our interim township manager, Herb Bender, to please review our public virtual meeting rules.
Good evening, everyone. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and the end of the agenda. Public meeting, I'm sorry, public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized and move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference in the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or a question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring the go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone and you will then have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to also announce the Board of Commissioners did meet in executive session this evening prior to our meeting for legal and personal matters. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, Courtesy of the Floor, this is an opportunity for any member of the public who might like to address the board to please come forward with any comments or anyone who'd like to do so. Sure, if you'd please come up to the microphone. Thank you. And if you would also please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Terri Plattner. I live at 3642 Nassau Court. And I brought my husband along with me, Andrew, and my son Mark and daughter Kelly. First, I've never been at a township meeting, so I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you for all you do in making South Whitehall Township beautiful. We are here also to bring to your attention a change the township has made in the Spring Valley Estates community. I have to also take my emotions out. It leaves us very disappointed. Our family built the house we live in on Nassau Court 32 years ago, and there's always been a beautiful wooden footbridge connecting Nassau Court and Princeton Court. It was built for the first time back in 1990. Let me recollect. And I'm a teacher. I'm usually speaking without as much emotion. And it was rebuilt around 98, 2002. As the township started to rip down the wood footbridge last week with the sign closed August 8th, we just thought, okay, it's been 20 years. It's time for a new footbridge. And we quickly learned on August 11th that that was not the plan. We saw one black storm pipe get thrown down when the bridge was once constructed and rock dumped over top of it. On this day, I luckily bumped into the acting township manager, who has been wonderful, Herb Bender, outside my home, and I asked why. The reasons stated were number one, wood is too expensive, and number two, maintenance of a wood footbridge is too much money. I wish I would have known because I would have loved to be more of an active part and voice in this planning process and decision-making. I searched everywhere to see where this planning was discussed, where this planning was approved. I would have loved to attend those meetings and become more of a voice for my community and for my family. I love volunteering in the community. I am Commissioner for Field Hockey South Parkland Youth Association. I coach youth soccer. I've been a teacher in the Parkland School District for 20 years, and I'm a proud teacher. I would have loved to help with anything I could have helped. I couldn't locate anything about this plan and change, so I did contact Herb again that same day after my curriculum meeting. And I asked to meet to see the design and drainage plans, to get a better understanding and to learn what we now have to look out every day in our backyard and what is now a part of the Spring Valley Estates community. It's a drastic change, as you see from the pictures, from that beautiful wood footbridge that served our community members for 32 years, as a beautiful footpath for local homeowners to run, walk, take their dog for a walk, dogs that splash and play in the beautiful water runoff that kind of emulated a stream. Stormwater was not the issue. It never has been the issue. At that time, there were no plans drawn out. There were no quotes obtained for a wood bridge. There were no drainage plans. Nothing was planned to keep that wood bridge. I was confused. Per the Stormwater Management Procedures Ordinance, it's actually listed on the agenda tonight. That was a win. Why we as the South Whitehall Township, why we didn't have to follow that ordinance? Why didn't we need design plans, drainage plans? So once again, I asked the questions to try to keep learning, to try to grasp for a better understanding of what my new life was going to look like in my backyard. It was explained, this is township land, and this is what's most cost-effective. They removed something that was beautiful and very functional. I asked about the budget. Why is it too much money, especially since there were no quotes obtained? There was no research done prior to this project for wood to replace the wooden footbridge. We couldn't understand why the township didn't even try to protect and preserve a beautiful part of our community. As stated in the working draft for the 2022 Comprehensive Plan, South Whitehall Township's Resource Protection Goals state, preserve and protect resources that are important to the unique characteristics of the township. Using the resource protection strategies, I would have loved for this to have been identified and prioritized as a resource, that it was a unique characteristic of our township. I don't think there's another community in South Whitehall Township that has a beautiful wood footbridge to connect the two courts, and it's right here in your backyard, right down the street. To strengthen the regulations, to encourage, incentivize the resources and preserve them, and to pursue partnerships, I would have loved to be your partner, to protect that scenic resource we had in our backyard, in our community. Looking at the 2022 budget, replacing the Spring Valley Estates Community Footbridge with storm pipes and rocks, it was not listed. I continued to ask questions because I wanted to continue to learn, and Herb answered all of my questions. And I learned it was just a work order and routine maintenance. That was a hard one to swallow. It's not considered a capital project, so it does not need to be on a budget. And most of the materials, oh, they're in stock in the township, and all the work can be completed by our grounds and our crews and our operators. So this doesn't cost that much. I see Chase Park, Jacoby Park, the Greenway at Jordan Creek, the Rooftop for Mill House, Wears Dam, amazing park which my children absolutely love, and you know, the beautiful wood footbridge at Wears Dam, gorgeous, that we love to take family walks on. I see all that, but it's all been on the budget. There's been strategic plans for all of that. Why not Spring Valley Estates Park and Community? On the same day, I shared a video of me standing on our bridge showing the stormwater. The next day, August 12th, a second stormpipe was plopped down parallel to the first one. So now we have two. I asked more questions. Why two? Now versus one? And it was stated because of the video you showed me. I really wish I didn't share that video, but I was just trying to show that it's never been a problem. Stormwater's never been the problem. The water runoff, storm drainage, swale basin have always worked perfectly to never flood any homes in our community. So the installment of these two stormpipes was to strictly connect our two cul-de-sacs in Spring Valley Estates in a cost-effective manner. I met with Herb, Tony, Mike on Monday, August 15th, to continue to follow up with our discussions on site. It's been an emotional few days, but you know, I read the whole stormwater drainage requirements, 113 pages, well done, over the weekend to become more knowledgeable and try to understand why they were installing these stormpipes, when a natural wood footbridge with a natural water runoff that looked like a stream was worked perfectly fine for 32 years, and it came back to money and future maintenance. I would volunteer to stay in that bridge. I love volunteering in the community. What is there now in replace the wooden bridge is not appealing to the eye, to say it kindly. The issue is, at that time, there were no renderings. There was no drawing plans. There was no drainage plan. There was no community voice, and there was no community involvement. As a proud educator in the Parkland School District, serving our community for the past 20 years, as a proud Parkland parent, as a proud community member owning the home at 3642 Nassau Court since it was built for 32 years, I have strong beliefs that all stakeholders should have a voice and be an active part of the community. Since my meeting on Monday, August 15th, we've had many discussions and some changes to try to remedy the issue, but I wish there was more of a plan and community involvement at the forefront, so we would not be in this position. I am here because I'd be remiss not to have my voice heard on something that is affecting our community, my family, my backyard, something we have to look at every day, affecting our quality of life, our property value, and the look of a beautifully established community in South Whitehall Township. In accordance with the goal in our working draft of the Comprehensive Plan, Goal 1, identify areas based on existing neighborhood, natural characteristics, and existing physical boundaries to strategically plan for potential growth that is harmonious within the identified area. This footbridge was our area in our existing neighborhood. It was a beautiful natural characteristic and with beautiful physical boundaries that was very harmonious with our community and served a purpose. It did a great job of never having our homes flood and providing proper drainage. It is very disappointing that the cost of wood and maintenance could destroy this in our community and that we had no voice. We know the South Whitehall Township Parks and Rec Department, they strive to enhance the quality of life to all citizens and visitors. They provide quality facilities, open space, diverse rec programs. We, my family, see the amazing things you're doing all over our township and in our school district, and we love our parks and green space. We appreciate all your hard work, and we're grateful for everything you do to keep South Whitehall Township beautiful. We're proud to live in South Whitehall Township, but at the same time, we're very sad that we're being directly affected in our backyard of a home and that something was done with no voice, no community involvement, no plan. We would do anything to have our natural wooden footbridge back connecting Nassau Court and Princeton Court and water runoff back in our community that really emulated a stream and looked beautiful. We would love to meet to discuss this further. I know I only have five minutes. I'm trying to go as fast. I have many pictures and videos, and we would love to share. We would have loved to have the opportunity to have a voice before construction started. So what we're respectfully asking is that you please take this into consideration. Please possibly add it to a future budget, and please remove those black stormpipes, those boulders, that rock mountain, and open it back up to rebuild our wooden footbridge and the water runoff that had served our community for 32 years and was a beautiful scenic resource, to protect that in compliance with our 2022 Comprehensive Plan, to protect scenic resources and to protect natural, unique characteristics of our township, so we can continue to be proud of living here in South Whitehall Township. Thank you so much for listening. Sorry I got a little emotional in the beginning. Thank you for your time and have a great night. The pictures, I'm a visual learner. That's the teacher in me. The pictures on the front page are just a few pictures of before. And my son didn't really want me to share the one of him in the costume. And the after, one of those was taken this morning for the after, and then the before and afters. So I just really would be remiss not to bring it to your attention. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you very much for bringing that to the board's attention and for the detailed history. We appreciate that very much. I'm happy to hear that both Herb Bender and Tony and Mike have been working with you. So at this point, I was going to ask Herb if you could give us if there's any update or guidance that you had.
Yeah, she has seen the rendering. Tony had showed it to her before the meeting. I don't know if she took a copy of it. I am currently working. I have three companies that I'm getting quotes from currently on a new footbridge. I do have the wood estimate from last year that was 7,000 without the new beams. And I am also working with a company that I will be out there tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM to meet that can build a prefabbed bridge that would come in and sit back across there. So I am working on getting numbers to, if we would want to move forward in the future, to put the bridge back in. We will know a budget cost number and everything like that.
Thank you. Yes, my other question, the board is free to jump in as well, but my question was for Tony. The issue of the pipes in the swale, is that something that was needed from an engineering perspective?
So right now, there's a good amount of water that runs. There's actually a culvert right at the corner of Spring House and Walbert. That's kind of the start of this. It goes back behind the houses. It crosses the path that goes behind their houses and then goes to a larger basin to the southeast of their development. The bridge was there to convey the path across the swell. I wasn't involved from the start, but in terms of maintenance, the pipes were replacing the culvert so that, excuse me, the pipes were replacing the bridge from a hydraulic standpoint to continue to convey the water. So that's why it was put there, and the path goes on top of it. Hydraulically, again, I guess, to mimic what Terri said, hydraulically, the pipes will work. There's a number of things that will work. I think the concern is the aesthetics.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board or questions?
I have a question. She does have this rendering, this picture?
Yes, Tony showed her that picture this evening. Yeah, she's correct. It did not look like this. This was not the original. This came to this after working with her. Originally, I was going to put grass across so it could just be mowed while we're there mowing the park. We have worked to this rendering to try to make it look like the bridge again. So yes, I have worked with them, trying to appease them as much as I can and keep them in the loop of everything going forward with this. So that's how we ended up at this rendering. That's why originally, it was just going to have boulders going down the side of the path when it was going to be just in grass so no one could fall in. They wanted more of the bridge look, so that's why we went to the split rail fence. And the big boulders is how we do them in the storm basins also at the end of the pipes. And the plantings, I have volunteered to take her with me to help pick out the plantings also that will go in there. But yeah, she is correct. It did not look like this in the very beginning.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, so you'll keep us posted on the progress as well, Herb. And Terri, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Diane, I think Brad had some.
Of course, sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. I don't want to say anything of substance necessarily because I know it's still, we're working through the process, but I do want to say this. You have a beautiful family. Bringing them, especially young children, to a township, municipal meeting, I think is a great way for them to learn how to get involved in government and how to present themselves. So for that, I thank you. I really thank you and want you to feel welcome to come at any time and share your thoughts with us.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to address the board this evening? Sir? If you'd please state your name and address for us.
Yes, good evening. Robert Weiss, 2042 Whitehall Avenue. First and foremost, I'd like to publicly thank Secretary Hodges for her interest in this, her response to coming out to our house and speaking with us on Sunday after this incident Saturday evening with burning. I lived in a township since 1990, and wood burning was never an issue till just recently. And as a previous speaker most eloquently said, "We were never informed of the change that now you're allowed to burn wood." And I don't want to get into the point where just, okay, at night, I like to open my windows so I can get some air in because it can happen during the daytime. I walk the neighborhoods, and people do burn in the daytime. It's foul smelling. It's obnoxious. It's smoky. And I just don't understand the quality of life in 2022 that we can allow burning in the township. People can say, well, I like to grill or something like that. Well, there are things called grills that you can buy, and you can grill in your backyard. Why do we need the fire? Why do we have to have a fire? I don't understand that at all. There's no such thing as being a little pregnant, just like there's no such thing as being a wood burning fire pit that doesn't smell. It just doesn't happen. There's no such thing. Now, when Ms. Hodges came out Saturday, that was horrible. I think she had probably already told all of you how bad that was. Now, that was to the south of us. Generally, fires occur north of us, directly across the street, and that smoke comes directly into our home. It comes from the northwest. There's another home right there that they've been burning recently. I spoke to Tom Harper last year about it and Chris Savage last year about it, and then it stopped for a while. Then this year, it happened twice again. And then when I called again in June, I was told by the police department that, nope, they're allowed to do it, and we're not going to respond to those calls anymore. Do I have a recourse in that? No, of course I don't have a recourse in that. And that's what all three of them told me, Mr. France, Mr. Kirk Savage, I'm sorry I screw up his name all the time, Mr. Harper. And how can I have no say in the matter when that's obnoxious? It's just horrible. And I think if any of you lived next to people doing this, you would not be happy at all, not even in the least bit. I just don't understand it. Now, in speaking to Mr. France, he did say he has been in contact with other municipalities in the area, but I don't understand why us being South Whitehall, we have to follow anybody. I think if anything, we should be the gold standard. And if we did want to follow anybody, let's look to Allentown and see what they do about having fire in your backyard, a campfire. You have to have a permit. You have to pay for a permit. The area has to be inspected by a fire marshal. You're only allowed one permit per month. The person applying for the permit has to be there administering the fire. I don't understand. I don't understand why it's just anybody can do whatever they want. And if you look around neighborhoods, any neighborhood now, recently, there's a lot more of people burning. You see new fire pits. You see piles of street trimmings. Now, that's not going to disappear. It's just going to go into the fire pit and get burnt. And that's horrible. I don't see, I mean, we walked our neighborhood, and I'm surprised there aren't more people here, but then again, I don't know who's on Zoom. But nobody likes it. Nobody wants to speak up because nothing's going to happen. And I don't understand how nothing can happen. Again, 2022, we talk about the warehouses and the truck traffic with the congestion and the foul fumes and stuff from trucks and traffic and everything, but yet fire is okay in our own backyard. It just boggles my mind that anybody is okay with that. And to speak to the point where, well, how bad could it be? Well, Secretary Hodges, she did come out Saturday evening and saw for herself how bad it could be. If any of you lived next to that, I don't think you would be the least bit satisfied at all. So I thank you for the time. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you on this matter, and I hope we can get something done. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. One thing, we are going to have a workshop on September, the second Wednesday in September, and this is going to be on there. So you are more than welcome to attend this. John France, the fire marshal, will be in attendance also, and we're going to look to try to iron out how we're going to move forward with this.
Okay, I understand. You know, workshops are fine, and we have to get everybody's opinion and all that. Quality of life, I don't see having a fire in your backyard as quality of life. Being able to open your windows or go jogging or walking your child in the middle of the afternoon and not having to deal with smoke, that's quality of life. Not doing smores in the backyard. We do have parks that have fireplaces. People can use that. I don't understand.
Yeah, I understand your stand. I just wanted to let you be aware of that there is going to be a workshop. The fire marshal will be there. He's going to explain to the board his points of it, for it and against it. So you're more than welcome to attend that evening.
And just to piggyback, that workshop is to develop the ordinance, so to make the regulations for fire, open burning and whether we're going to pursue that. So that's an opportunity.
Well, that's part of the thing, like the previous speakers mentioned, nobody was made aware of this. It was never in the Parkland press. It was never in any of the quarterly newsletters. It was never online. And all of a sudden, June, it changed. We can burn. We can burn now.
It's related to the, and I apologize because I'm not an expert on it. John France really is. It's tied to the International Building Code that we have to adopt as part of being in the Commonwealth. So there were changes to that code, and then we have an opportunity to further restrict it, and that's what's going to be discussed at that workshop. So your input is perfect timing for that, and it's much appreciated.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you both for your information on that. And thank you, Mr. Weiss, for bringing that to our attention. And I do would invite you to come back to the workshop and share your information with us as well. As Dave Manhart said, that will be an opportunity for the board to give input and listen to our fire inspector discuss what we would like to see in that ordinance so that we can begin to get it ready for adoption to address this issue for you. Thank you very much. Come to the microphone, please.
You know, it's, there's no agricultural use there now. There's weeds that are four feet high along Walbert Avenue and Cedar Crest and also along Huckleberry. I believe there's a township ordinance of two feet or so. What can be done with that? Is that going to be there for?
They're out there today.
Oh, okay. I didn't see it this morning.
Yeah, what they did today was they cut the right-of-way back. Tom Harper is working with them about the field also. So the code enforcement officer is on it already. So we wanted to make sure, because there is a bus stop there, that people didn't take a chance of tripping over the high weeds, falling into the street. So we wanted to address that first, and then we're going into the field with it.
Okay, then also on Huckleberry, too. Yep, it's there. Okay, second item, I think a few months ago, I brought up the idea of coordinating planning with North Whitehall Township and possibly Whitehall, patterned after the lower McConge, Mayus, Albertis planning, joint planning. And I'm thinking particularly of things like the new UNFI warehouses up there on Route 309. And if you look at any development on North Whitehall or Whitehall, we'll funnel through South Whitehall one way or the other. So I urge you to check out how they're doing it and down the other three townships or boroughs and see if we can't do that because long-range why I think that's a good idea. And another reason why I was thinking of that, you know, there's two emergency access routes, both northbound and southbound, for North Whitehall Emergency Services to get down onto the turnpike. I wonder if we had worked with those other townships or the other township and their state officials, could we have got the turnpike to put an EZ Pass exit there as part of the thing? And the last thing I'm trying to remember, I think 20 to 25 years ago, maybe Mr. Osborne knows it, there was talk of a Route 309 bypass that would follow the turnpike from basically, I think Pope Road. I assume that it would end up back up in Snacksville around 873 or somewhere. I don't know what ever happened to that idea. Does anybody know that that would be?
So you're hitting all of my comp plan checkboxes here. So the 309 bypass was brought up related to the 309 Betterment Project. So PennDOT, it's been on the long-range transportation plan and on the tip, which is how federal funding occurs. And they have what they call a Betterment Project for 309. And that involves widening, some widening, turn lanes. They'll be improving the intersection at Orfield Road. And then the concept of that 309 bypass, we have on a 1974 map that we have in the files.
That far, okay.
Yeah, it goes back a ways, but it was never really pursued. And the issues with a bypass is it's such a big project. And the issues with a bypass is it's such a big project that it needs to go through the full planning process with the LVPC, get on the long-range plan, then get on the tip. So it's, you know, a 20-year process just to get it planned. And it just wasn't followed through back in the '70s or '80s, whenever that map was. And it was never, never got on that list. But it's something that we're aware of and will be looking at with regards to the comp plan. And then just to piggyback on the multi-municipal planning, North Whitehall and Upper McCongee are either in the process or recently finished their comp plans. So the three of us will have new comp plans. And it's a good opportunity for us to start talking about moving forward from there. So those conversations are in the works. But we want to kind of wrap ours up so that we have fresh information.
Okay. You know, I haven't, I'm on the Freight Movement Task Force and the Leah Valley Plan Commission. We haven't met for a while, but that was, you know, we're concerned about truck traffic.
Yeah.
We've got a bunch of freight guys on the movement task force.
We just finished up our transportation goals. And one of the things that came out of that was working with the neighboring municipalities because transportation, like stormwater and watersheds, is not, does not follow municipal boundaries.
Yeah.
So we're definitely trying to look at it more holistically and looking at partnering with some of the neighbors.
Yeah, I've often thought with those new horse warehouses and Cracker Sport Road, could a road been cut right out to Blue Barn right by the truck stop? Or just north of the truck stop? Avoid all, all the other neck roads and all that?
Yeah, so I would encourage you to kind of pay attention to, as we go through the comprehensive plan process, there'll be follow-up workshops targeted specifically at transportation, official map updates. And that's where these ideas really get put on paper. So I encourage you to kind of pay attention for official map updates.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Torrey. Are there any other members of the public? Yes, ma'am, please come up to the microphone. Good evening.
I think this is on. My name is Catherine Galco Weiss, and I also live at 2042 Whitehall Avenue in the Greenow Walts. And I just want to add a few more comments about the wood burning that my husband did not comment on, if you would bear with me. And I did talk to DEP. They did confirm, yes, you can, local municipalities can have stricter controls. They also have a code that restricts offensive odors from circulating beyond the property of the event. But they don't like to enforce it in residential areas. The person I talked to suggested that the township handle this. The other thing I'd like to mention is that wood fire pits evoke campfires with warm nostalgic feelings. But burning wood releases a large number of compounds, including nitrous oxides, carbon monoxide, benzene, and other potentially toxic, volatile, organic compounds along with tiny particulate matter. And they also release large amounts of carbon dioxide, which is a strong greenhouse gas. So imagine if you're in a row of townhouses and one of the middle neighbors decides to have a wood-burning fire pit every night, and you have asthma, or your child has asthma, or you have COPD. This isn't at all healthy. We also looked at the Mannheim Township in Lancaster County. And I'm going to, I think, I believe I sent this already to Mr. Harper, France, and Kisker Savage. But that was, wood fires have to be 25 feet away from structures, property lines, and any combustible materials. So that includes trees, fences, whatever else. And only dried, seasoned wood is acceptable. So they can't go scavenge your yard or the neighborhood forest and burn it that night or even a month later. And you have to keep it covered so it stays dry. And it must be fully extinguished by 10:00 p.m. I like that idea, having it done by 10:00 p.m. And various township officials are authorized to order a fire extinguished if it is offensive or objectionable because of smoke or odor emissions or if local conditions make it hazardous. And that's another good idea. I would like a total ban on wood burning. But some of these ideas are reasonable, and some of the Allentown ideas are reasonable, and they're pretty good. And whatever you decide, please put it in the quarterly news because I've never seen it in there. And it would be nice, maybe people just don't know about it. And it would be nice if, thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Appreciate that. We will take those into consideration as we work towards our workshop in September. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that has any comments at this time? Dave, is there anyone online with a comment? Okay. Moving along to Agenda Item 5. It's the approval of our meeting minutes from the Board of Commissioners meeting on August 3, 2022. They've been distributed to the board. Does anyone have any comments on these minutes? Hearing and seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We have no presentations this evening. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, ordinances. We have this evening for discussion only to consider for permission to advertise an ordinance reenacting, amending, and restating Chapter 296 Storm Order Management of the Codified Ordinances of South Whitehall Township in its entirety, providing the article shall be known as the South Whitehall Township Storm Order Management Plan Ordinance and further providing for general provisions, definitions, storm order management standards, drainage plan requirements, inspections, storm order management, site plan requirements, storm order BMP operations, and maintenance plan general requirements, operations and maintenance, maintenance responsibilities for permanent stormwater runoff controls, fees and expenses, prohibitions, enforcement and penalties, references, repealer, severability, failure to enforce, not a waiver, repealer, effective date. At this time, I'd like to ask our MS4 Coordinator, Mike Elias, and to please present on this ordinance.
I feel bad for not writing more after forcing you to read that for what I'm going to read. It's much shorter. So South Whitehall Township is required to adopt the 2022 DEP model stormwater ordinance by September 30, 2022 in order to stay in compliance with our MS4 permit. We've worked on this internally. We've also consulted with our township engineer as well as Attorney Zader's office. And everyone is comfortable with the mainly clarifications to the current ordinance. We are asking to move forward with advertising this update for a public comment.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
I just have a quick question, Mike, if I can. It says everyone is in agreement with the changes. And I didn't read, see the old changes as in not being a commissioner then. Were there many changes or were they mostly? So mostly their, their MS4, it was for MS4 O&amp;M consistency with the permit. DEP went through and they did some clarifications on definitions. They also did some reorganization. And then they put this out to the municipalities. And they tell you, you can, Tony, you can correct me if I'm wrong. It's come up to this standard. You can go more, but you have to meet this standard. So basically, we went through the ordinance, brought everything up to that new standard by DEP. We have our yearly submittal to DEP at the end of September. And this ordinance, if it's adopted, will be in that packet that they get for review. And then they'll also review it. But it obviously needs to pass here, public comment. And I believe LVPC will also take a look at it. Correct, Tony?
Yes, that's correct. And to be honest with you, most of the standards in our township ordinance were higher than DEP's. We maintained all of the Act 167 requirements put forth by LVPC. It's a great go-by. But what this did is add in additional requirements for the MS4 permit. So operation and maintenance. And when each individual property owner that has a BMP on their property has to report to the township. So there were some clarifications in the definition, things like that. But we made sure that we did not lose any standards. We maintained if not, went higher. And then we have also added the requirements that DEP asked us to add to the ordinance.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other, excuse me, questions or comments at this time? Are there any public comments on this ordinance? Hearing and seeing none, I need a motion to proceed with advertising said ordinance.
Go moved.
I'll second it. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, Mike, appreciate it. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, resolutions. We have a resolution to adopt the sidewalk deferral call-in policy for South Whitehall Township. And I'll call on our Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart, to present.
I'm sorry, I was getting some feedback. So what we have in front of us is the sidewalk deferral policy. We were here, I believe it was May or June, with the draft version. And the direction from the board that evening was to tweak it and make it a formal policy. So what we have in front of us is the resolution adopting that policy as well as a revised deferral policy that we sent it over to Zader's office. And he made, they made some suggestions to include in that. So it's really buttoning up some of the legal aspects, adding in resolutions when appropriate that was missing from the original one that you saw. So with that, there's not a ton to it. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer or try.
Thank you, Dave. Are there any questions from the board?
I have one question, Dave.
Yep.
Who primarily wrote the policy? And to what extent was it taken from any other reference policies?
It was primarily done in our office. So the CD Department, we kind of looked at, we did a deferral call-in around Tillman Square. And we learned quite a bit through that process. So we took some of the experiences of that process and tried to incorporate it into this policy so that moving forward, you know, everybody's getting noticed. The Board of Commissioners is making the decision. It's not staff pursuing it. So it, you know, we feel it's appropriate for it to come to the BOC. So it was primarily done in-house, myself, Robert, our part-time, I think we called him part-time assistant manager or planner. So he helped with it a lot. So it was primarily done in-house. And then we sent it over to Zader's office and got a lot of comments from the legal side.
Okay, so then my comment is, it's extremely well-written. It's very legible, logical, easy to understand, very stepwise. I believe it'll be easy to implement on account of all of that.
In that case, I take all credit.
So thank you. And please pass it on to the others who work on it.
I certainly will.
Yeah.
Any other comments, Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Wolf, you stole my words. But what I do want to say is this. I remember this coming before the board a month or so ago, maybe a little bit more. I think the way it's written, strikes, for me anyway, the right balance between the rights of the township for the topic that we're covering and respectful notice to the property owners so that they are fully engaged and aware of the process. So I thank you for taking our thoughts into consideration and putting them into good words.
Any other comments from the board? I'll concur with all the comments that have been made so far. Thank you for putting this document together. I think it's an important guide for us as we begin to move forward with this. I was surprised to see that 22 miles of sidewalk are deferred. That's.
There's quite a bit.
Yeah, substantial.
Yeah.
And it brought to my mind, and I don't know if we need to at some point have a formal discussion or action. I know that the Planning Commission over the last several years has tended not to grant deferrals. But as I read through this document, and it's five pages of procedures, and it's going to take time and effort and staff hours, I see an even greater need for us as a township to have sidewalks be included in the development at the time that it's being presented to us all the way around. It makes more sense as we talk about walkability and connectivity in general and moving forward. I just don't know if we need to take a formal action to make that also a priority for the township. But I think with this in hand, it makes sense to not add any more miles deferred.
Yes, it's certainly a lot easier to have them put in at the time of development. There's a lot of difficulty with deferrals and calling them in, which is why setting this process is going to help everybody be on the same page moving forward. We will be looking at a bike-ped plan that'll look at our deferrals, existing sidewalks, deferrals, trails, and all of that to kind of put together a network and make some connections. And there may be deferral call-ins that come out of that process as well.
Oh. Is there any action that this board would need to take from a legislative position to?
To direct, like, I don't know. And maybe Attorney Zader can chime in. But is it a policy directive of the BOC to direct, ask the Planning Commission to not defer? Is it a formal action or is it just kind of an unwritten policy?
Certainly, if you wish to formalize it as a board, you can do that. Ultimately, any kind of deferral or waiver has to receive Board of Commissioner approval. So even if the Planning Commission would recommend a deferral or a waiver, whether it be sidewalk or anything else, ultimately, you don't have to agree with that. But if you want to formalize the directive of the expectation of Board Commissioners, certainly you can do it in writing in the form of a resolution. You can do it in the form of a motion that appears in the minutes and then communicate that to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the public on the sidewalk deferral call-in policy? Hearing and seeing none, I will make a motion to approve this resolution. Go here, a second.
A second. And also, I'd like to make a comment just that you would notify as a planning member, commission, Commissioner, you're sitting on that committee. If you would less notify them. They'll get it from tonight's meeting, obviously. But when they meet, if you would just tell them what our decision was.
If, I, well, go ahead and do the vote, and then I'll have a comment.
So if a motion is second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
So if it's the board's directive or their board's pleasure, we can certainly draft a motion to appear on a future agenda if that's what you guys would like us to work on.
I don't know if the board wanted to think about it. Maybe we could talk about it in the next workshop or forward this evening.
I personally have some reservations about it, but I haven't seen the wording of the motion. And my reservations would be that I'm opposed to the Board of Commissioners putting their thumb too heavy on, in this case, the Planning Commission. Let the Planning Commission do their job, and then we can evaluate their decision-making and whether we agree. That'd be my only reservation.
And like Attorney Zader said, it is ultimately the BOC's decision. And there's usually rationale as to why granting a deferral or a waiver is appropriate. And that comes up when you do the approvals.
And that's part of my thinking, Commissioner Kelly, is that I'd like to hear what they have to say. There could be a really good argument, you know, in some specific case.
That's a good point. Okay, moving on, we'll go on to motions. We have a motion to proceed with finalizing the PennDOT land acquisition at 4298 Windsor Drive. And I will ask our interim township manager, Herb Bender, to please present.
Thank you. This piece of land is located at 4298 Windsor Drive, identified as Lehigh County parcel ID 547685647629-1. The Pennsylvania Department of Transportation is seeking to acquire this from South Whitehall Township as part of their Route 309 interchange project. Pendot has offered the township $104,500 for this parcel of land. The administration is seeking approval for the Board of Commissioners, so we can proceed with finalizing this transaction. And what that means is, we're going to do a title search. We are working with Attorney Zader's office also to get everything completed, but we can't move forward without the title search first, and then when we have everything ready to be finalized, we will come back to the board with everything.
Very good. Thank you, Herb. Excuse me. Are there any questions from the board on this motion?
I had a quick question. How big was this parcel again? Oh, it's 1.16 acres. Okay.
Yeah, it's roughly around 75,000 square feet. I'm sorry, 7,500. Thank you, Tony. I'm sorry, extra zero.
Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I hear a motion to proceed with the motion to finalize the land acquisition?
Go moved.
I'll second. We have a motion is second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Motion B, we have a motion requesting permission to advertise for sanitary sewer relocation project. Again, we'll call on our interim township manager, Herb Bender.
Thank you. Public Works Sewer Division is respectfully asking for permission to advertise the work to move the sewer line that is currently suspended on the Tillman Street Bridge over the turnpike. We are currently working with the property owner to obtain an easement. The reason we are coming to the board now is so that once we have the easement finalized, we can go right out to bid for this project. This project needs to be done by the end of the year. The action we're requesting is approval to advertise the work to relocate the sewer line. And again, the advertisement wouldn't happen until after we obtain all the easements we need.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any board questions or comments on this motion?
Question, Commissioner Kelly. With this project, we have, we're under time constraints. It has to be done by the end of the year. What happens if the bids come back and they're incomplete, or, you know, kind of like what happened with Where's Dan, that we had to go out to bid three times? What happens with that time constraint?
Ultimately, DEP steps in then. They, in order for them just to kick us off of that bridge, DEP would have to approve that, which I can't speak for DEP, but I do not see that happening, because then we would just be releasing raw sewage down Tillman Street. So I don't think that would be the best option.
Any other board comments? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with the motion to advertise sanitary sewer? I'll second it. Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Motion C, we have a motion requesting permission to execute a one-year contract for NICSOL 360 program, and I'll ask our interim township manager, Herb Bender, to please present.
Thank you again. Public Works, along with Emergency Management and the Police Department, are requesting a motion to move forward with the NICSOL 360 contract. This price, the price for this program is $4,374. This will allow all of us to send out messages to the residents of South Whitehall Township. Myself, along with Jeff Kelly and Chief Dorni, feel this program will be very helpful to get any kind of messages out to the public. Public Works, along with Emergency Management and the Police Department, are respectfully requesting a motion to approve signing a one-year contract with NICSOL for $4,374. And again, this contract would have two one-year additional we could extend it for, and those, the prices for the two-year extensions would be $4,000 a year. And again, this would run the rest of the year, along with the reverse 911, to make sure this program is up and running also, and then we would do away with the emergency 911.
Thank you, Herb. Are there any board questions on this motion?
I do have a question. Does this fee include support?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and we have talked to them, say we go into this and we don't like it at all. They have never issued a municipality any kind of fee for canceling early. So we did bring that up to them already, just in case we do get into this and we don't like it. They have said that they have never issued a municipality before any early termination fee.
Excellent. Thank you. I think this is a wonderful program. Any opportunity we have to communicate and inform the public is always wonderful. So I appreciate you bringing this for our consideration. Are there any other comments or questions from the board?
Just have a quick comment. Our Emergency Management Director did present this to Public Safety, and they were very overwhelmed by the presentation and what the potential it could do for the township, of things that happened within the township. I know Chief was there, and he was impressed with it, as we heard from Herb, that he's very much in favor of it. So I want to thank Jeff Kelly, Emergency Management, for putting this through.
Thank you. If there's no, excuse me, no other board comments, any comments from the public? Yes, ma'am. If you, please come up to the microphone, otherwise we can't hear you on the virtual meeting. I apologize.
Does this include messaging to landlines as well as cellphones?
Yes, this will include, you can get an email, landline, cellphones, social media, it can be blasted every which way possible to get the message to everyone. And if you come out on September 10th, we're going to have, yeah, it's a sign-up, so we can make sure we have the most recent information of all the phone numbers, email addresses, and that will be held at Spring House Playground. Spring House West, I'm sorry. Yep, no problem.
And Herb, if this is approved this evening, will we also have time to put a message about this in our township newsletter?
Yes, I can run that by Cookett. Jeff, I'm not sure, did we put something in there already about this? So there is a placeholder in there already.
Okay.
Yep.
So we'll be able to announce within the next month to the public. Well, that's excellent. Good timing. There are no other questions from the public. I'll need a motion to proceed with this motion. I'll make a second. We have a motion is second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Motion D, we have a motion to approve recommendations for Jordan Creek Greenway Trail Shared Road Section. And Herb, you present on this as well this evening?
Yes.
Thank you.
Staff has followed up on a request of the Board of Commissioners to look at possible alternatives to the proposed shared road section of the Jordan Creek Greenway Trail on River Road. After looking at the LTAP traffic data and having many decisions with traffic design professionals, staff recommends moving forward with the alternative roadway widening to the north. The budget line, the engineering would be permitted, will need to be permitted in 2023, and construction will need to be budgeted in 2024. So the one that it would be is, we would be widen, the recommendation would be, after having a meeting with Pendot and everyone on this, would be to do the widening of the road, and putting the concrete jersey barrier down to make a secluded area for the pedestrians to walk on.
Thank you, Herb.
And the price of that is, just for the road widening itself, is $572,500. We would look to cut that cost in half by not using any TASA funds and budget, and use the Public Works crews in-house to bring the price of that down by 50%. But we could do that in-house with doing it with our own workforce and equipment and that. And then the other one that was the state liked also was the alternative number four, stream bank widening and stabilization. The price for that is $892,000, and Public Works would not be able to handle that. And again, the million-dollar TASA grant that we have received would be used just for the trail. All these options, we would have to come up with the funding for. So the trail itself is $1 million. So whatever these prices that we just read to you, and out of the five options that were there before, need to be additionally budgeted for this section. And I know we did have them look at a sixth alternative, where we would put a smaller bridge across the creek, and turn the walking one into an ADA handicap accessible ramp, and that came in roughly around $800,000. So our recommendation would be alternative number two, roadway widening to the north. And the state was in favor with that one also. The other issue we could run into with alternative four and alternative six would be the permitting. So it would be very tight. We might miss the deadline for the grant opportunity then.
Thank you, Herb. So I just want to reiterate, the million-dollar grant has nothing to do with any of the options we're talking about this evening. So that's just the rest
No, the million dollar, the million dollars will be for the trail, and that's what that portion will cover. It might be just shy of $1 million, but we're basically looking at having to budget all these options, which again, that's why we were considering the road widening, which we do have down there some stream bank erosion issue, which would move the heavy weight of the cars over, and when we repave that, that'll help stabilize that on that side also.
And does the million dollars also cover the, all of the fees that the township...
For the trail.
For the trail, everything. So there'll be no township funds expended for the actual trail?
I don't believe so. Mike Cookett has handled that. He is currently out with a medical issue, so that's why I'm filling in to present this for him.
Thank you.
I do believe all the fees and the engineering, all that is in there, except for the soft cost of engineering, to get it moving, to get the design and everything. I think that was budgeted in this year's budget.
If I could just jump in, the grant for the trail in this location is, included the share row, where the trail was going to be on the road. So that was in that million-dollar grant. So these are alternatives to get that trail off the road. That's why it has to be budgeted separate.
Thank you.
So what we were looking for tonight, so we could try to stay on pace with this, is get the feeling from the board if they're okay with alternative two with the road widening.
You mentioned that there's going to be a concrete jersey barrier here, so...
In the road, yes.
In the road. So from a safety perspective...
When we met with Pendot on that call, they said you could either use guide rail or the concrete jersey barrier, which I believe the concrete jersey barrier is more sturdy and would be more protective of the pedestrians and the citizens walking on River Road at the same time.
And I was on that call as well. I know one of the concerns was the dwelling that's very close to the road. What amount of space is between where this new road will be to that dwelling? We're going to take that road north, so will it encroach on that home?
No.
At all?
The homes that we will be moving closer to are up the hill. The resident that lives there doesn't want us to move the road over, but we have put in for plannings there to help break the noise down and that.
So the aerial, this is the section of where they're proposing the widening, and the house is set back up on top of the hill.
Yeah, I think it's that little house to the side there that's right at the road. There was a conversation with the Pendot officials that...
Was this one?
That house is very close to the road, and if you push that road up, it's going to be a little bit close.
So that's where the tie-in appears to be at that house, so it doesn't really widen until it gets almost to this property line where the right-of-way has been dedicated. So it doesn't look like any of the widening starts for, I don't have the scale, but it looks 50 feet beyond the house.
Are you able to show us on aerial, that aerial, like the satellite image, where that widening would start?
I can try.
Commissioner Kelly? Tony wants to...
Sorry. I think that what everyone should remember is that, you know, conceptually, these are concept plans. Obviously, there was not a full design done. I think the ideal design went to be, stay as far away from that house as possible. The tie-ins and the layout there are conceptual, but I think that, obviously, once we, once there's full survey done, once there's full layout done, that's when they'll have a good idea exactly where the exact tie-in or pavement will be. Obviously, I think the intent is to stay as far away as possible, make sure that that's protected.
And there is a concrete barrier between the road. And there's the barrier. Then there's the bike and pedestrian lane. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Is the bike and pedestrian lane wide enough so you don't have any problems there as well? Because you're going to have bicyclists trying to pass pedestrians.
Dave, can you go back to that plan? I think the measurement is on that.
So it's 22 feet wide, which you're going to need 11-foot travel lane, so that's 22. Does it say how wide the...
The microphone, I'm sorry. So the width of the path doesn't change? It's the same width throughout the whole, this whole section?
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Can I ask a question, or are you...
Of course, no.
Okay, as you're thinking.
Yes, I'm thinking.
So I know we've been through this analysis, and this is the, maybe a decision night, but I just want to make sure I'm clear. So the million-dollar grant that we got will complete the greenway and temporarily use the shared road option. Half, approximately half of alternative two of the 572,000, let's say $270,000, would be budgeted in '23 or '24, and that would widen the road and actually change the configuration going through this tight spot. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I think I got it.
Yeah, and I have met Tony down there, because he would represent us through the Public Works side, for engineering, along with Michael Baker. For engineering, along with Michael Baker, we would get this completely staked out, cut sheets made, so it would be billed to standard, just like anyone else would have to. And we would look to do it in-house just to help cut that cost drastically.
When, okay, so we will see this as a budget request or budget entry. Would that be in '23 or '24, Herb? Or do you need to think through that?
I would think, when we read the memo, it says the engineering permit would be in construction will need to be budgeted in '24.
Yep.
Thank you.
No problem.
Herb, if I remember the discussion with PENDOT, there was some discussion about the road itself and rock underneath and whether or not this would be a project that Southway Hall Public Works could help with. Has there been any testing on that road to see if it's viable for us to do?
From what I got from staff, when that road was down there, they worked down there already. And when we put the new water line in down on River Road, which was part of Bridgeview Terrace Phase One, we did not hit any rock down there. So we are believing that there is going to be no rock possibly high enough that we would have to constrain with this.
One other question I have is the, the greenway is going to eventually connect to the game preserve.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The, the greenway is eventually going to connect to the game preserve and to Allentown. That's the plan.
Yes, I believe so, yes.
So, and I, I mentioned this on that call that we had with PENDOT also. So if someone's coming from the game preserve area and they wanted to get into, access the covered bridge park playground, we know that the county does not want pedestrians on the covered bridge. So if they're coming down this trail, they're not going to be able to get across the Jordan Creek to get into the park. And I know that's one of the conversations we had over the last several months was, how do we bridge people over the creek to allow them access to the park? This design doesn't do that?
Well, yes and no. It wouldn't take you right to the playground area. You would have to go down to the current footbridge that is there now and then come across and walk back up. That would be the only route since the county does not want us to have pedestrians walking on the bridge.
And that footbridge is not ADA compliant at this time either?
At this time, no.
So the million dollar grant, would that allow us to retrofit that with a?
No.
No.
No. Along with, if we put the other bridge across the narrowest part of the stream, to ADA retrofit the current walking bridge is about $800,000. So I don't know off the top of my head what the difference of the split was. So I, I couldn't give you an exact number, what the number was for the ADA fit.
I, I guess that's my question overall. I obviously wasn't on the board when this greenway was originally planned by the township. And I'm just surprised that we're not, that we're hugging that side of the creek and not providing access across for travelers and visitors who may want to come in and use the park. So I, it's, it's hard for me to envision as time goes on and more people frequent this area.
I mean, we can table this to the next meeting when Mike Cookett is available, if you would like to do that. I just tried to keep it moving for him. Like I said, he has worked on this the whole time before I took this role on. So he would know a lot more of the detail for you.
I, I can jump in a little bit. Part of the reason why the greenway was kept on this side of the creek was the challenge of obtaining easements on either end. So it was easier to work, I think this is my understanding, and you know, this is coming from Randy, we had conversations about it. Getting into, to Parkland High School was a goal. So that kept it on that side of the creek. And then the easements along the Jandal Property further down to eventually get into the nature preserve. I think that was a driver to keep it on this side. One thing that struck me, and I'm kind of with you, is that the pedestrian access to the trail is kind of limited because of the covered bridge. So something that just jumped out at me is we could put in a future grant for a trail, a bridge that would connect parallel to the covered bridge somewhere. I don't know where it would go. But just in concept, because there's the main parking areas there and you have to get onto the other side of the creek. It would be more of a direct access. Because, so that could be something that we could kind of put in the works for future grant funding.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, it, it goes for both sides. As you spoke, I thought about the parking lot and you're at the playground and you want to go on the trail. Not that people wouldn't necessarily walk down to the footbridge, but it doesn't make access easy for visitors who wanted maybe to do both. So that certainly was one of my thoughts as I was looking at this.
Herb, and the rest of the board, my concern with postponing this from tonight is, I, I think the conversation we're having is a good one because it completes the concept of what we're trying to accomplish over time. But the million dollar grant isn't going to solve any of those problems today, is it?
No.
So the, the decision in front of us now really is how, what is the best use of that dollar, those dollars that are available to us? And we should be taking advantage of them now. As far as future planning, that makes sense to me. The prot plan itself may shed some light on this one. That's finished. But postponing this decision about what we're going to do with this million dollar grant for things that the grant won't even apply for, apply to, doesn't make sense to me.
That grant is set. I mean, you're not, we can't change anything with, with that grant. Even this restructuring is, is, I mean, I'm pretty sure they were on the call and they're aware of it. But there's jeopardy of losing that million dollar grant. So.
Yeah, we have.
That million dollar grant is really a big picture connection project. And a lot of what we're looking at are, you know, smaller detail, getting people to the trail. So I think that's like, to me, that's kind of future planning.
The other issue we're, we're running into is when they put this grant in, they put it in a shovel-ready. And we're not shovel-ready right now. So that's why we kind of need a decision so we can move and get everything finished up and stay on target with the TASSA grant also.
Any other comments from the board?
I do have a comment. I, I still have a problem with the road sharing. I understand and respect everybody's point of view, even with a concrete barrier there. I just have felt that with 165 acres of park, why we can't keep people in the park away from the road. So I'm, I'm struggling with this a little bit. But I'm only one person, so.
I think.
I'm struggling with it too.
And part of the issue is we can't, can't really change it as part of that million dollar grant. And if we change it, we're going to potentially lose that million dollar grant. And I think there's things that we can do in future planning and future projects to make these connections. The big thing for me with trails is creating circuits and loops. And having a connection across the Jordan in this vicinity creates a perfect loop for families to walk or people, kids learning how to ride bikes and things like that. So the opportunity to create a loop with the existing trail through the park is there. And I could see pursuing future grant funding or budgeting, we'll have to deal with that. But it, it's, this is a tough one because it is that big project and the big connection between, you know, it's a greenway that goes through the township. So it's tough. And there's this one little pinch point.
And, and again, I understand everyone's concern. And that's why we brought it to the board, just to see which way we wanted to move. I didn't feel comfortable with just taking myself and Mike Cookett and making this decision. So that's why we came to the board to try to have some input on which way we should go with this.
Well, I appreciate Dave suggesting down the road we could potentially find a way to get people over the creek into the park, provide better access. But that could be five or seven years from now. And that's five or seven years of people sharing the road. And that's, you know, that's a safety issue. It's not, not a given that that could happen down the road either. So I feel like, for me, the decision we're making tonight, we need to keep public safety certainly in the forefront of our minds, which I know we all do. It's, it is a tough one.
I think Tony had something to say.
I, I'm not here to sway anyone's opinion. I respect all your opinions. I know that something like this was done in Bethel Township. If you pull up or look at the Fremensburg Avenue Bridge over Route 33. It was redone five years ago. What happened there was the same situation that the bridge was there. They wanted a safe way to convey pedestrians from the west side to the east side. There's a few handful of developments that went through. They did a very similar situation that they had. Actually, they have multiple lanes, Fremensburg Avenue both ways. On the north side of that bridge, it used a concrete barrier protection, which separated the cars from the sidewalk. So for a visual, more of a visual understanding of what this will look like, that may be something that each of you may want to look at, take a look at to see and even feel how that, how it feels, how it feels walking across with the traffic right there. And then having the, the concrete median as a divider between yourself and the traffic. So just as an example.
Thank you for the input, Tony. Mr. Raspin?
Thank you. I'd like to just reduce this to how I see it. My concern is we're bumping up against a deadline that I heard on the conference call that we may lose the opportunity to be able to accept and use this grant. Today's meeting was supposed to be, let's say, at least a soft deadline. So with that, I, I'll defer really to Tony and Herb. I mean, if you feel we can go one more meeting, but I don't know what would change. But my concern is we're going to say nothing tonight and we're going to end up not being able to use this grant, which would not look good for Southway Hall. No.
And like I said, I.
Thank you for applying. No thanks.
I totally respect everyone's opinion. Again, I look at the costs of it. Everyone knows me. I'm very number oriented. That did play a big role in my thinking of it. I understand Diane, Monica, Dave's concern with using a shared road. That's why I leaned more to the Jersey barrier, like I said, instead of the concrete, to try to protect them even more than just what the guide rail would do. Just, but we can gladly go either way. I'm just putting it out there.
But, but let me see if I can get an answer to my question. Tony, without putting you too much on the spot and putting you on the spot at the same time, what are your thoughts about the chances that we're going to meet what we need to meet in terms of permitting applications and all that for alternative two even if we don't make a decision tonight and postpone it one meeting?
Alternative two? Excuse me, sorry. Alternative two uses the existing roadway and pushes the road north. So what that's doing is it's not, you don't have an impact necessarily on the stream. I think everyone here can say that if we do something to either use a stream or push any type of stream crossing puts you into a big permit. It's a joint permit. You would be studying, doing HECRA's analysis with FEMA. You would be doing to DEP, Army Corps. You would be studying all the wildlife, the plantings, everything within the stream. So it, it's a much larger permit, six to, nine months is probably tight to be able to get that permit. It could be pushed for a longer amount of time. If you remember, a few months ago, there was a proposal to just study this section of creek to figure out what we can do to stabilize that. And I think that all the commissioners understood how big of a project that was to do just a HECRA's analysis and figure out how much water goes through. So that analysis would be incorporated to additional bridges or moving of the stream. So I can't say, I can't say that it can't be done. But to add another layer of permitting in here by impacting a stream would, would really push the timeline to a, to a tough spot. It can be done, but it can, it's going to be extremely tight to get permitting and be ready, nine months to a year to, to have that permit in hand and know that we can move and then bid the project, design the project, bid the project, have it ready for 2024.
But it's not really in our control, is it? We're, we're subject to the workload, let's call it, of the permitting agencies and priorities.
Correct. Well, correct. It's, the township can submit as soon as it can. But it's, it's up to how many impacts there are, if there's, and how many permits are things that's necessary.
Tony, I'm trying to look up the bridge you're talking about. You said it's Fremensburg Avenue over Route 33?
That's correct. Yep, Fremensburg Avenue, the north side of that bridge, there is sidewalk on the east and the west. That's right. Big north of 78. There you stay. Right there. So, so if you zoom in on that, that's correct. The northbound, the westbound lane, which is on the top side, for lack of better terms, of the road has a concrete barrier on it. And what that does is it acts to protect the sidewalk that's behind it. So if you turn the other way. So you can see that, that steel rail sits on top of a concrete barrier. Behind that rail is actually sidewalk and then comes the edge of the bridge. So it won't have, the park won't have an industrial look like this, but.
At Fremensburg Avenue, there's a lot more traffic than River Road.
Yeah, and this is the same setup they added on the H Street Bridge in Allentown when that was redone to protect pedestrians.
I have a comment. I have listened to the entire long discussion. I've heard three aspects. I've heard the major million dollar project. I've heard the proposed solution for this road. And I've heard reference to future development to address other public safety issues. I've heard that the, the major project and the grant is entirely separate from the decision on this road. Yet, the, the discussion continued to conflate those, those two issues in, in a way. So either they're separate or they're not. I think for simplicity, if I understand this correctly, Herb has come to ask whether we would agree to move forward with this solution for the very specific safety issue that has been considered across multiple meetings. Probably there's no ideal solution based on all the work that's been done to date. I think this is an acceptable solution. I think the barriers, again, although not ideal, would be an acceptable solution.
There's no other word comment. I'll open it to the floor. Yes, sir, please come to the microphone.
What's the distance?
What's the distance that the trail parallels the road? How far is that? The reason I ask is I hike a lot. I hike around all through Pennsylvania Appalachian Trail. I hike New Hampshire, other places. And the Jersey barriers are an excellent idea. They're very, it's very safe. You feel safe walking with traffic on the other side of a Jersey barrier. Railings, no. I definitely disagree with the railing part. But it doesn't seem that it's that far. And as far as a safety issue goes, personally, I would have no problem. And certainly the shorter the distance, the better. But with the Jersey barriers and it not being that far, you know, there's a lot of places that are a lot worse. And from my perspective as a hiker, I feel absolutely confident that there's really no safety issue there. Again, accidents happen.
I believe the span is around 100 feet.
Yeah, see, that's really not that. I mean, certainly people have to use caution and accidents happen, but accidents happen just all around our neighborhoods where there are no sidewalks and such. And what about the speed on the road? Do we know what the speed is?
It's 30 right now.
Yeah.
But we did talk to PennDOT and they said it would be up to us. We could even lower that speed to 15.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's really not bad. You know, from a safety issue, I think that's, it's really a non-issue, honestly. But that's just my opinion, you know? And like I said, I do hike a lot and I've hiked for years. And there's a lot of places I would feel a lot less safe than your proposal here. So that's just my input. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Any other comments from anyone in the public?
In the chat, it was, there was mention of the, I'm sorry, I think it was the Tillman Street Bridge also has the concrete barriers.
Thank you.
That was the new one that just opened. Right off the front street that just opened. Both sides are like that, I believe. We're going to the east side, yes.
Well, we have before us the recommendation from staff for option number two, which is the Jersey Barrier. Is there any more discussion from any of the board members on this? Okay, is there a motion to proceed with option number two?
I make a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor of option two? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Moving on to motion E. We have a motion requesting permission to award the bid for the Wears Dam project. And I'll call on interim township manager Herb Bender.
Good evening. We finally have, hopefully going to move forward with this project. One bid was received and opened on Monday, August 8th, 2022 at 10:00 a.m. for the Wears Dam Rehabilitation Project. This, but this bid was advertised twice in a local publication as required by law. The bid documents were downloaded by 160, they were downloaded 165 times from the PennBid website. CMR Construction was the only respondent to this rebid. This was the third time the township has advertised and opened bids due to receiving no bids and receiving bids that were considered non-responsive or higher than anticipated expense projects. Public Works and Purchasing reviewed the bid submitted by CMR Construction and received positive feedback from their references. Their bid response was in the amount of $298,825 for this project. And we will be expensing to the budget line item 304, In addition to this project, work being funded out of this line item is $72,260, not to exceed, has also been allocated and encumbered for engineering service, services, project management by Michael Baker International. We are respectfully requesting the bid of, the Board of Commissioners, oh man, award the contract to Wears Dam Rehabilitation Projects at the bid price of $298,825 as referenced on the attached bid tabulation. Sorry, I had a couple tongue twisters there.
No problem. Thank you, Herb. Thank you for reading that. It's an exciting day in the township to have this bid before us. Are there any questions on the bid?
I do have a question, President Kelly. Don't we already have $150,000 budgeted towards that from previous years?
We actually have $250,000.
Okay.
Yeah, and the total fund with what was taken out in the bond and for this, we're sitting at $850,000.
That's correct.
There's your bridge. There's your bridge for the park.
There you go.
I have two questions. Herb, this, these two numbers here, 298 and 72,000, I, I think what you're simply saying is both of those are budgeted in that line item.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, you weren't trying to say anything more than that?
No.
Okay. Second question is, there's no information in here about schedule. I presume there's been a thorough review of their commitment and ability to meet the required schedule?
Yes, we have received all his bid forms back. They are all 100% correct. We did reach out to, I believe, three or four of some references that were supplied also. They all had great comments on them. They said he's a top-notch person, does great work. Their company hit their dates and everything. So very good recommendations to use them. I don't see an issue. We are currently in the process of working to get the, the pre-construction meeting set up so we can get him in, hopefully get him into the creek this year and possibly still hit the deadline of this year to have it done. If not, we might have to wait till next year. But we're looking to try to get that meeting scheduled by the end of this month so we can get him in there right away to wrap this up. Thanks.
Any other board comments or questions? Any from the public?
Jacob Roth, 1499 White Oak Road. I'll just read the comment. Since the bid price came in well under the, any previously projected costs, will any money already set aside for the repairs not used on this project be kept separate for any future repairs, projects, planning to the dam?
Yes, when this money was taken out in the bond, it was marked for capital projects. So that $600,000 will have to be used for capital projects.
85% of the bond proceeds have to be spent within the first three years. So if any repairs and maintenance is to be used for the dam, it's got to be within three years of last fall.
Yeah, and that's why we're keeping them online to try to get them done this year, if not early next year, right away.
Excellent. No other comments from the public? I will make a motion to proceed with the motion to award the bid for the Wears Dam project.
Second.
Motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Herb.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I don't go any though. I need you for item F, motion to approve budget transfers within the 2022 fire budget.
Yes, the fire fund is in need of budget transfers in order to cover costs for the remainder of the 2022 year. There are a few line items that are already over budget as well as some that we project will go over budget if transfers do not occur. Move a total of $36,064.68 from the capital contingency into the below listed accounts to cover the over budget line items and projected costs for the remainder of the year. All right, we're gonna, would you like me to go over all of them? Number five has been removed on everyone's sheet. That was a misprint on there. That should have been coded to a different account. So we have taken that transfer off of there.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any questions on the transfers for the fire fund?
What's the lessons learned for budgeting next year?
Lessons learned for next year? We have changed the whole way the fire is going to be budgeted. We have a couple line items that'll stay as combined for all three stations. And then all the other ones, like for fuel, for their oil, vehicle maintenance costs and stuff like that, we came up with a formula to break it down to how much each department will get. Instead of having one big pool of money, they will all be responsible for their own pool of money and making it work at the same time. And what we have learned is the first thing that is going to be funded going forward is $200,000 from the fire tax is going to be put right into the apparatus fund. And $50,000 is going to be put right into the physical stability fund right away every year. So we have made big progresses and I must say I have met with the fire chiefs numerous times already. I met with them before, after I broke down their budgets to go over these transfers with them. They were in favor of these all. We do still have some capital projects that will get done, but physically, financially, we will be okay. Yes.
My question, Herb, is it's August 17th and this is the cost of the remainder of the 2022 year. I mean, it seems premature to me that they're, they can project that far ahead.
I projected that far ahead. I actually did the numbers, Dave. What we did is we pulled last year's budget numbers from September, October, November, and December to see where we were short and what, how much like oil we used at two of the three stations, what the maintenance records were from then and bill wise and that. And like I said, I did go over all of these with the three chiefs and they were all in favor of them.
One of the concerns would be the vehicle maintenance. We just don't know what could happen.
Yeah, and there is still, we have stopped capital projects for right now, except for two of them we're moving forward with.
All right, I just want to be sure we're on, on target with them.
Yeah.
If they're okay, obviously. Thanks.
Any other board questions or comments? Anything from the public? I need a motion to proceed with the budget transfers.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to correspondence and information items. I'm going to call on our interim township manager, again, Herb Bender, to go over our current vacancies and upcoming meetings.
All right, our current vacancy on boards and commissions. Civil Service Commission, we have two openings as two alternate vacancies. The Green Advisory Council, we have three vacancies. Landscape Shade Tree Commission, we have two vacancies. Park and Recreation Board, one vacancy. Environmental Advisory Council, three vacancies. Upcoming meetings and details posted on the website. Thursday, August 18th, Planning Commission, 7:30 p.m. Monday, August 22nd, Landscape and Shade Tree Commission, 10 a.m. Wednesday, August 24th, Zoning Hearing Board, 7 p.m. Friday, August 26th, Movie in the Park. And Monday, September 5th, the offices will be closed to honor Labor Day holiday.
Thank you, Herb. Moving on to old business, Wears Dam and Herb, if you have any additional information?
Anything, just that we're working with the contractor that's going to be awarded to get the pre-construction meeting set up so we can get him started right away.
Excellent. Thank you. And I'll call on our community development director, Dave Manhart, to give us a comprehensive plan update.
So for comprehensive plan update, we had a, we had to cancel the last workshop, last week's workshop. Certainly not the last workshop, plenty of those. But we had to cancel last week's workshop meeting. We've sent out links to get comments from the BOC and Planning Commission. This phase, we're really looking to get comments from the elected officials and appointed officials on those two boards to kind of craft moving forward. Specifically what the comments are, we're looking for transportation draft goal comments. And then we have set up some mapping for potential land use comments. So we divided the township into different planning areas so that we can get an idea of things to, I believe it was preserve, enhance, and change. So for each of the planning areas, we're looking for those comments. And all of that will be worked into draft land use goals. And then if we're able to pull that off, we'll stay on schedule. So it was really important for us to not get off schedule and try and stay on schedule. So I believe those comments are open Friday and for the next meeting, September, what would that be? September 14th will be, or 13th will be the next workshop. And we'll go over draft land use goals. And we should have implementation. We've been working on getting the draft plan together. So we've been working with Michael Baker. We have kind of the page templates worked out. We're putting the information in the appropriate places on the templates. So starting to come together.
Thank you, Dave.
I have my ones per meeting question. You weren't here at the last meeting, our newcomer, Chris, I forget his fast name.
Stroller.
Stroller, yeah. So I asked about the schedule and he said he had something prepared. He was going to present it at the last meeting, which, you know, we couldn't hold. Is that something that can be sent to us?
So, yeah, we can, it was in the presentation for the last meeting. And the way we set up the workshops is you basically just go down a notch for each meeting. So that it's the same graphic we used in the, what would have been the July meeting, just changed from red to gray. So it just moves forward and I can certainly send that over.
So you're saying that's there online?
It's, the new one isn't, but the one from July is. So it's just, it just moves down a notch for the progress.
Thank you. Moving on to direction and discussion, we have nothing on the agenda for that. Are there any items that the board wanted to bring up at this point under this?
Yeah, I have one item. I think somebody has to say it. Herb Bender, interim township manager, you're on top of everything in great detail and with specific information. I believe everything in the township under you is under, under control. You give timely updates with excellent communication. I believe you're doing an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Third.
Thank you, Herb. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item 13, courtesy of the floor. If there's anyone from the public that'd like to adjust the board, now would be the time to do so. Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item 14. I need a motion to authorize payment of our invoices and disbursements. I'll second that. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Executive session, the board will meet after this evening's meeting, an executive session for legal and personnel matters. And at this time, I'll make a motion to adjourn. May I hear a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. This meeting is concluded.